And we'll go ahead and do a little follow-up. Donna Kopacki present.
Nathan Johnson present.
Lisa Krautek set off, I'm here.
Eric Fisher present.
Tiffany Hughes present.
Tony Benedetti present.
Okay, so just we're just doing a-
That's an agenda.
Well, yeah, so I think there's a little confusion. This is normally our work session. However, we did not have a meeting on the first part. So this should be our official meeting for the month. So the agenda will be the same as the last time because if I recall correctly, we have a sidewalk program to discuss. And then we have green space. And for those of you who don't have it yet, we'll get maps around to you. I've labeled a newer map with close-in of what we had talked about a couple meetings ago. And we can kind of go from there. And you've got one.
That'd be good.
There should be two, that's actually-
Okay, which one I add, but I have more.
You've got, yeah, you've got the one that's closer on the label. The wider map is here. So this is the wider map. And you can see both of them. So there are presents for you to look at if you want to see the wider area. Since we focused on kind of the green spaces to be conveyed here in a few months, I believe the commission was getting started on kind of brainstorming where things would go. So I put them back into the map based on my rough labels from this map. So everyone could kind of see it. They can be moved, they can be altered, edited, added, deleted. The discussion was to continue in that regard. I did want to touch on, one of the goals of this meeting was to punch up, jumping the sidewalk program, punch up the sidewalk program. I know that we talked last meeting. If I recall correctly, we bumped up the membership legislation. Is my memory correct on that? There was an action on the legislation for membership meeting. We were adding two advisory positions to P&amp;Z for a recommendation to legislation. Can anyone recall? Becky, did I have a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah, yeah, so-
I don't feel like we ever made a decision like-
We can redo it.
Yeah, so we talked about they couldn't be voting members.
That's right.
But we could have advisory members.
Basically, and I'm working on printing. So I don't know who's got their stuff and who doesn't. Since the packages weren't printed, since this was supposed to be a work session and it was a little confusing to the real business versus work session. The three key items on that were two advisory members. Membership could be reviewed by council in those cases and removed. And just trying to remember my memory on that one. I think there was another minor one on that. Here it is. There was the reappointment default period. So the mayor has the opportunity on any member's two-year period. So that there's a 30-day period at the beginning of the year. If the member mayor does not opt to reappoint, then that person, if they so choose, can continue to re-conserv and continue the two-year duration of the next term essentially. It basically puts into practice what was going on for some time after review of how members have served.
I guess I do want to ask about that since that's something we're discussing now. And we have a new mayor. If we choose to move that up to council with that 30 days start from whenever they approved it or-
No, it's kind of retroactive.
Do we assume that that sort of already happened?
Since Nathan is the one who is the mayor, I think she can speak to her desire-
At this point, I don't, if it's not broke, don't fix it. I mean, at this point, Nathan's only been on here six months, not even. So, I mean, to me, it's not something that I would want to change right now. I mean, I think trying to keep things moving along is, so I think it would be more, more so because it hasn't been done in 16 years the correct way. So I think it's, we've had council, we've had people ask if we could start following some of the rules, I guess is maybe to laugh. So just doing things the right way, having an actual procedure and following it. So I don't want to say that we're not going to start off that way. But at this point, he's the newest member. He's, you know, he would be, I don't want to say that unless he wants to go. But I mean, at this point, we want to keep things moving as smooth as possible. And then after the break of the year, we can really start doing things the right way.
Okay, that's fine.
Do you have, you always get about your package. Do you have your package from last time?
I don't think, I actually looked quickly, but I do not think I brought it. I don't know what happened to it.
So I was gonna prove wrong.
Yeah, anybody can remember.
January 29?
Yes, what do you have? Let's see, that's it, right there, personally.
I have the whole, yeah, whatever you need, I guess.
Yeah, let me print this one.
Could they be any going to? I know, right?
Yes, and they also have a permit.
They're getting together.
Yes, there is budget money for this. So we will be, we'll be so, so we will be putting forward-
What is it?
Go Giesgo. They're very effective in other municipalities. They come, they use dogs, they do, they get them out of the lakes, they move them on essentially.
We're spending money on that?
It's in the budget. So that's what you want to do.
We decided to do that.
That would be, the council as a whole voted for the budget. It's in the budget.
Well, I understand it's in the budget, but there's a difference between being-
Mayor will choose if to put a PO forward.
Deciding that we were gonna do that, that's-
That is up to the admin.
To say that stuff's in the budget, if you know that it's in the budget, maybe you ought to start working with the matter a little bit closer because-
She's not being trying to figure out what's in our budget. Yes, we all have to learn our jobs. So we go, let me make copies, I'll be right back.
You can all lock geese if you want. Geese are fun.
We have ponds, we're gonna have waterfall.
And I don't think it's bad. I don't think they, I mean-
I don't either, but a lot of people do. They don't like the poop.
Well, I have a recent-
And they also-
I have to say, yeah, I did the home and garden. What's his toes that lives down there on the corner of the South Lake with the nice sequoia? The little ranch that wraps around, you're like, wow, this is awesome. It must be hell to live here. Because, I mean, his yard is just constantly covered with geese and geese poop. And, I mean, it's such a nice little house. It's got such nice, you barely even see it because it's tucked behind those pines there.
That's something I would say is-
Is it Paul Miller? I'm not sure who you're talking about.
He's been here forever.
Where, what street do they live on?
Just down here across the way. He's got the tall sequoia.
Mrs. Paul?
Yeah.
Oh, Mrs. Paul. Oh, well, yeah, she's always had geese. I mean, she's had to fight the geese off.
Yeah, I mean, and I could see someone there just really being like, ugh.
It's part of the deal.
Well, if you buy a house on, if you have a, if you have a house that's on a pond, I don't know what else you would-
What about me?
Well, you have a temper.
You have geese?
Oh, yeah, I do. Oh, you have a pond? My backyard, yes.
See?
It doesn't. Other than the fact that when we're trying to get down our street, you know, Jordan Rury wouldn't think that we would have, you know, traffic issues with geese in the middle of the road. Yeah, no, we do. We definitely do.
Spreading around. I heard an owl tonight coming out of the house. Early, seems early.
Yeah, with this weather.
Is it a barred owl, do you know?
Who cooks for you?
Yeah, yeah.
That's fun. I thought it was strange when I was in Spain, like, the owls were all day long. Like, day and night. And there were so many of them. They were just like chatting back and forth, I mean, middle of the day. And I'm like, wait a minute.
You could see them?
No, I couldn't see them, but you could hear them.
They have different, they must have different owls. Because aren't they usually, uh?
Yeah, I mean, Minerva's owl is this really tiny species that's in the Mediterranean.
Yeah, no.
Say that, yeah?
This is just a, additional two members.
I mean, the goddess Minerva, she had an owl. The owl's the really tiny species in the Mediterranean, yeah.
Oh, oh, well, that's probably why you didn't see them.
Maybe, yeah.
But it certainly hurt them.
Were they hooting like, like you could tell?
Yeah, they were making, they were making a lot of racket. I mean, talking back and forth, you could hear like-
You got one.
This is tinier than the screen?
That one goes to-
Oh, it's quite small, I don't know.
Well, it's appropriate we have them, I guess.
I hadn't known it.
This is-
That's it, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Can we, can we not look at this sidewalk thing again? This will be the last time we copy those.
You have to punch it up. You were supposed to, the homework was, if there were any change suggestions, you were to tell me this time. Otherwise, you may accept it as is and council will change it anyways.
So, well, this is my thing. I feel like I haven't, I haven't made, I have said how I feel about it. And I feel like it sort of doesn't matter because it's gonna go to council and they're gonna decide.
I was like, I don't think we should spend an hour on it tonight talking about it because they're gonna be ultimate. I think that's great, the way that it is. It gives the homeowner an option to just do it. It gives, and it does say $100 for the village building inspector services, da-da-da-da-da. Maybe they'll keep it and maybe they'll change that amount. Maybe they'll do this, maybe they'll do that. But I think us arguing about it is, or not arguing about it, but discussing it, they're gonna ultimately make the final.
Yeah. So we could have saved this paper.
See, that's, that's part of the problem. I hate when you were dysfunction of this group.
But now you get to look at it before it gets brought up in my committee next Tuesday.
I don't know how things get initiated, you know, and then next thing you know, just like we just now started talking about geese.
Not for you to decide. That was just an advertisement, so to speak. You'll get to see it when it comes to you.
Well, it came up because Tiffany mentioned the noise and he just, he just-
I popped it up. It wasn't, it's not a discussion point. So it's not something to be focused on within this body.
Well, I use it, maybe that was a bad example. But sidewalks is another thing that-
So you were called sidewalks got pumped down to here from council.
I know, and I would want it, I think, initiate this.
Why didn't you guys keep it?
What's that?
Why didn't you keep it?
Because all, it's supposed to start with the plan.
Not, not all.
Not all, no, I shouldn't say all, but zoning issues should start with the planning and zoning commission.
And this is kind of one of those gray areas. This is not necessarily zoning, it's council simply asked. And Matt Star was part of that when he was on council. And people said, hey, see what you come up with. So we put together, you know, a quick meeting for review. If everybody's good with it, it just, part of the process, it just gets popped back up. Everybody votes, it goes back up officially, right? That's, it's a process, guys.
And the easiest thing that I would say is this to me, actually having this done before it's a problem is ideal. I mean, I would like to have a plan, regardless of what they decide. I think the worst thing for many of us is when somebody walks in the door and I just kind of stand there and look at them like, mm, I wish I knew. And I don't mean it that way, but this is finally something that's gonna come about before, you know, everybody says, we don't really have a process yet. It's a gray area. That's, I mean, how many times have we used the word, it's a gray area this week?
It's always a gray area.
So I, this to me is exactly what I want everything to be. Is now they're gonna change it, yeah, but spelled out.
So I'm, I'm walking through there, I'm already seeing, I'm seeing cracks.
We did from get go.
So, so how, do you tell the homeowners to go out and look at their sidewalk? And if something's wrong with it, you call MI before it's, I mean, how do you, how do you get it how it's supposed to be before they leave?
If it's a new homeowner and if it's a sidewalk issue, okay, I mean, it's their responsibility. They notify MI and say, hey, I think this is, like, there's a giant heap, right? If it's something that's, anytime you lay concrete, you're gonna crack. In a way, if there's a settlement, it takes time, things happen. There is no perfection with concrete and roads and all that kind of stuff. When we have these on curb and gutter and roads, then as part of our punch-out, we'll go through it with MI. Some things will be fixed and some things will not because they're more, it's more an aesthetic issue, right? I don't like that crack. Well, the crack's not detrimental to the function of the curb.
I gotta say, if I was a new homeowner and I paid for that, I don't know if I'd pay for it, but I would want that to be-
Then that's the homeowner's issue, right? They don't want to argue, it's their sidewalk. Because ultimately, for this program and how it usually is in municipalities, it is back to the homeowner, it's their responsibility.
So then do we somehow get the word to them that they need to be checking?
Because I don't think they need to-
I would concur with that. We can't, let me put it this way. You can't one-on-one dummy-proof everything that someone does. We have rules in place. We do our best to tell people, you are welcome to go door-to-door and tell people, hey, check your sidewalks. If you want to do it as a personal initiative, not every day. So what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, it's no, it's not, the village does its best and the municipality does its best to protect people from ultimate problems, right?
When people call in here about raid attacks, we tell them the best we can, but we still can't make them do their research and we can't make them, you know, and I can say this as a realtor. Most people don't do their homework and you can't fix everything. And that's why I want to make, I'm gonna be real, that's why I want this in place. Because I think the majority of the people just assume that it's our problem. And that's our part.
Yeah, it's just like in their homes, they're responsible for any problems within a certain warranty period that they see to bring to their attention. Otherwise, the, you know, the developer says, well, you didn't tell me. You know, it's a year later, you didn't tell me. You got three weeks. Why didn't this come up in three weeks? Because it's assumed that it came up later, but it's outside the warranty period, right? They have to take initiative, right, and tell them themselves. And this stuff's all given to them. They have their paperwork and the mayor says it, people don't always do it.
Yeah, and I will tell you, there are some people that are completely proactive because there's people unhappy with the right things that were already seen. I won't go into detail right now, so we don't have to be here till midnight. But there are some homeowners that are definitely on it. And they're dotting their i's, crossing their t's already when it comes to concrete and things like that, so.
That's fine. Anything with the roadway or public right-of-way will bring to their attention as we move forward. Especially when you convey us. A lot of things were phased in, right? So, you know, from a phase standpoint, something may have been fine in phase one. But we're several, we're two years beyond phase one now. And if something shows up, it is our responsibility from right-of-way, except from the standpoint.
And I definitely saw at least one place where it had, obviously a heavy machine had gone through and it just, you know, crushed like three or four feet of sidewalk. And, you know, a few months later, it had been replaced, I'm sure. And I said like, yep, we ran a backhoe over that, crushed that sidewalk. We'll have to get back to it and fix it later.
Well, I think in MI's defense, I mean, there's a period of time at the end, they're gonna go through. I mean, that's just the way you gotta do it.
Do we know that?
We'll be going with them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, what did you say, the final checkout or checkoff?
In a project like that, you got it, you can't go and fix everything and then have another backhoe run over something after you just fixed it. So you wait to the end and you go through, you have what's called the punch-out. Well, that's the, you know, that's what's gonna happen.
So, so we-
But we're also going, or you are going with them for things that we'd be responsible for. Though, I mean, I'm still seeing water meter things haphazardly placed, things that-
You say water meter things, do you mean those little blue things hanging around?
In the ground.
Yeah.
Did I say that today?
Yes, I saw that.
So, yeah.
Think, so things like that, are we going with them to say, okay, now you need to fix this?
As anything that's brought to our attention will bring to their attention, right? So anything like that, so those little water access points, right, for the water lines, those are put in a certain height according to plan, right? Within inch or so, okay, they're not ridiculous. So sometimes there's a little air in that. Now, they put ground around it and sometimes there's settlement. Sometimes they'll stick up a little higher. Inevitably, in all subdivisions, those tops break. They just do, people crack them, reach thaw curs, they break over time, those little covers. Kids pull them, that's a common item.
Yeah, so this particular one is crooked in the ground and the soil was not placed.
Yes, I have a picture of it.
It wasn't replaced to the height of what the other, I mean, initially. And then it's settled. So that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about.
I understand. And that one, I have a picture of it and we'll see if we can get it fixed. Right?
Okay.
Okay.
And then maybe what we can do, and this is just, you know, the week before we know or a month before we know, everybody get together their little lists and we don't have to have MI here. I mean, it's just something that you can go, okay, what about this, what about this? And we'll bring it all to Eric's attention and he may tell us half of it's crazy. And then-
I'll walk it with him, I'll search him.
Yeah, he can ask him or, you know, he can tell us that, you know, they're not gonna do this, but-
There's some things that'll fix, some things they won't.
So is it up to them to fix it or?
Not entirely. There are things, there are things that we will, when you go through something, there's things that are legitimately probably beyond sort of warranty period. So there may be a street, right, and there may be a crack in the concrete. It may be aesthetic. And it's like, listen, this is aesthetic. And if I'm not sure, I'll ask our engineer or he'll ask one of his engineers and we'll look at specific item, right? Because there may be things that really are not detrimental to the function of the street, right? There are things that are clearly aesthetic. We don't like that crack. Well, we're not cutting out a whole piece of curb and putting it back in. It's not reasonable, right? There are things that we want to be repaired that are reasonable, right? That really are detrimental to the function of any particular item. I.e. your pipe, for, you know, if it's out of alignment, if it's not done right, it needs to be fixed, okay? But there are clearly, there's, you walk down Minerva Park, you know, there are cracks in the road. Well, it's our responsibility to fill those in after, you know, it just is, you know, from a standard street maintenance program standpoint. And the same thing will apply here. So we just, we'll go through things and they'll argue and we'll argue. Everybody at the end of the day will make things happen, so.
Okay.
I can tell you, I, when it comes close to us or whenever this last approval of or accepting of whatever land we have to accept, and the last time we're doing that, I promise you, I'm gonna make sure that things are the way they should be. But we're not to that point yet, I would say.
We're not, we're a few months out.
Do we still think July, August, September?
I think that's fair. I mean, we'll start, we'll start seriously talking about it right about midsummer. I think that's reasonable.
I didn't see any lots still, because I think they're all in the term.
There are four left, four that I have not permitted. Yeah, so I can speak to that, that there are four that have not come through yet.
But website doesn't show any, that's why I was wondering.
Well, they may have pulled them off, they're still, those people are still there, which is-
Is the lot across from the basketball court, is that gonna be park? Is that a park lane?
Cross or which side?
On the other side of the connect?
So, no, no, so that one, I know what's on that, so that one here.
That is a park lane?
That one, yeah, so there's park here and there's two lots. So what they did was, if you look at it, they gave us three lots back. So two on this side, one on this side, so we did it.
Right, right. Yeah, because my kids ride that basketball court.
It's great.
God, all half the mud in my kitchen.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't sawed it yet, they don't have to.
Yeah, sods, sods definitely an issue right now.
I know, it's got some fences over there though, so that's, yeah.
That's good.
One step ahead.
So, all right, so-
So back to the sidewalk.
Two things in front of you tonight then, yeah. So if there are anything you want altered from a recommendation standpoint to council, in which our legislative chair will review it, make those changes now. And I would recommend somebody make a motion to accept it and pop it up to council for their review.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I know that Tiffany and I feel differently about how it should be paid for.
Okay.
So do I recommend, do I recommend or I don't recommend? How do I go about that?
What I would suggest is if there is something you want changed on the document, you would make, you would discuss it with the body as to what you want changed. Body will need to vote for that change as part of, you know, they can make an amendment and say, yes, I have motion to amend this language. And then we can physically add that, right, to a copy. And then they vote to approve.
What's the differing opinion here?
Yeah, that's what we want to hear.
Well, I think you feel like you want, you're okay with residents taking care of it or village. And I feel like village, I think it should, I think it just should be-
Oh, you mean the program itself?
Yeah. Now, at the same time, I'm really okay with just saying council can figure it out. So I guess I'm wondering, do I recommend if there was something about it that I'm not completely sure about?
So we could make a neutral recommendation on the funding aspect or whether or not the homeowners have the option to pay.
Yeah, the, the, what we call the option is-
Well, the whole, I think what you're saying, they all pay.
Or whether or not they have the option to fix it, that's nice.
The village gets, so it's not uncommon for different municipalities to give people an opt-out period. That they opt out of the program, right? Most people in most municipalities don't care. The typical way it runs is the municipality bids out, you know, finds out how many. People who opt out are out. So we might have three out of 100 that opt out because they want to do it themselves to convince they get a better price. I'll tell you straight up, cannot. But they want to do it, great. So they get that, they get that option, okay? And the village then takes the other 97.
We'd be the three.
The other 97, yeah, that's fine. That's why they get the option.
Remember, we know somebody.
Yes, yep, that's fine.
But I feel like Tiffany is not necessarily in favor of the opt-out.
Are you not favor opt-out?
Or you're okay with if they want to do it?
I think if they, yeah, I mean, because again, if it's not done right, you gotta remember, they're gonna have to replace it again.
Yeah.
Are we, are we gonna make it? Are we gonna make it?
If it's, if it's a safety, if it's still a safety hazard, you're gonna have to.
You can watch, you can see if they do a bad job. You have to make them do it. They, they have to get inspection.
A lot of things in here that are enforced. So are we really gonna enforce it?
Yes, because if somebody, if somebody, it's so-
If somebody could get hurt on it, you have to.
Yeah, if there's something where they put in, let's put it this way.
Okay, I'm talking aesthetically.
Yeah, well, then-
Mostly.
Hold up. So let's, do you just want it to look like the other blocks or you want it to function right? So, okay.
Well, both.
Okay, so let's address this, one other thing at a time. So let's say we have a block and it's foul. And we put a big X on it because it's gotta be replaced, okay? So that homeowner says, hey, I want to opt-out. I want to do this myself. And we're like, great, do it yourself. That's awesome, right? So they, they have to physically pull that crap out. They have to dispose of it properly. They gotta clear their little four-by-four side, whatever it is, right?
Get a permit.
Yep, they got it, that's right. They have to be, as part of the program, they would have to get a permit, correct? And they would then go ahead and do their little concrete mix, a quick creep, whatever they're using, right? Now they put it down and now maybe they don't brush it exactly the same way, right? We're not gonna be the aesthetic police of it, right? It has to be done, there will be specs, all right? Under any program, there are specs. You must have, you can't be totally smooth. Totally smooth surface like this.
It'll break.
Yeah, they, someone will break their neck on it, right? You have to have it so that it has some roughness to it so that people can get tread when they're walking. Okay, so there'll be some specs for that.
We're assuming they're looking at the specs.
They will have to be, because of the part of the permit.
They had to, they got a permit.
If they just go willy-nilly and do it and they do it wrong, we're going to say, hey, guess what? You gotta break that up again and redo it. People don't know what they're doing, it's gonna be a much more, that's what I'm saying. Generally speaking, it's better opt for people to just go with a bitted program, which is cheaper than trying to attempt a little flat lay, do it themselves and maybe have to redo it once or twice. It has to happen, right? Or they put in, they mix their concrete wrong and guess what? After the first winter, it cracks and it's a whole hot mess, right? And we're like, hey, guess what? You gotta redo that again. Because it may pass inspection at that moment in time, but if it breaks up again-
Have to redo it.
On the consequent inspection of sidewalks in general, it's gonna be like, you're a hot mess. You gotta redo it this year. So that's typically how it works.
And this problem isn't gonna prevent things from looking different, right? It doesn't matter if it's the same guy, the same people doing it from one year to the next. It's been a little different.
You don't think if you have the same concrete people doing it, that it would look consistent?
You did, that year would look all, you would look consistent. It would be, it would be in our contract. We would, we hold the contractor to a certain, probably a little bit higher standard because they're going out there at the same time to do it. And it will look like you see them now. I mean, they're held to a certain level of consistency. And it would be very similar for any experience, it's not a big deal for any experienced contractor to do what's out there now, right?
But wouldn't, I mean, and just to be fair, if you replace, okay, you have 10 pieces and you replace the second piece and the sixth piece, it's very possible those are not going to match piece one and three.
They're not, they're not.
So that's why I, that's what I want to be clear of. Because you're gonna have variations of color because the sun has heated. So that's what I want to make sure that we're on the same page because-
The same company doesn't have the same guy there every year.
No, and that's also true.
I mean, there's so many different things.
Generally speaking, they're gonna be close. A professional is gonna do it close, but it will be slightly different. Now, when a resident does it versus the contractor, I can tell you, it does look significantly different.
Depends on what resident is. I've paid for my own sidewalks.
I understand that. I'm just telling you from experience, residents are not the professionals that use it. They just use different concrete mixes, they do things differently. And sometimes there's significant color differences and different patterns. And so it does change. It doesn't mean it's wrong, right? It doesn't mean it doesn't function correctly. It just means it doesn't.
Doesn't mean our property taxes, our property values are gonna go down.
It is what it is.
And you also have to realize that some people could end up replacing all of their sidewalks and their concrete driveway at the same time. And they were already planning on doing it. And now they have to do the sidewalk through Minerva Park because we're forcing them to do the sidewalk. But yet they were getting ready to redo their driveway and everything also. So now their driveway and their sidewalks don't match and da-da-da-da. So then you've got them complaining. And then, of course, poor Becky's the one that's gonna have to listen to the, I don't want you guys to do it because my cousin pours concrete for a living and you guys are charging me $600 and I can get it done for free. So, I mean, again, my best friend's dad is a, he lays concrete. We just had that conversation. So he would never charge me that for it.
I can say, it sounds like-
But I hear you.
It sounds like you can make a motion on this and either leave it or remove it. But I think council is going to, and I can only speak from-
Care at heart.
No, I think most of this is pretty good as far as I'm concerned. But I would be in favor of letting people, if they want to go through all the rigmarole and get a permit to do it on their own. I think Tony's in favor of that too, from what I was hearing him argue.
Well, we'll get that here with the argument.
I can see at least one, maybe two other council members that are probably gonna say, if someone can do it, let them do it. Because I could, I'm not gonna speak for anyone, Tony, but I just think they could, so.
So I guess my question really was about how do I handle it? If I'm not in complete agreement, do I-
If you want, here's what I will tell you, there's two ways for you to go. If the group agrees, so there has to be a motion to amend what's in front, right? Okay? And if people want to make that change and you need three out of five votes in the posse for that, right? So that's one way. The other way is, it's probably, it's gonna be a discussion in front of council. You know, and the P&amp;Z member and resident, I would say, you're more than welcome to come and have, give your opinion to council and say, I feel it should be like this. And maybe there's other people that feel like you. And that's, that's the, or it'll be actually be a legislative committee first for a while before it goes to council.
I think I would like to just do it the quick way.
What's that?
The quick way.
The quick way is to-
Just say yes.
The quick way, if you want to be it on record though, that you want it different, you can make a motion that I think we should amend this to remove that. Someone I'm sure would be nice enough to second you, then have some discussion, which we've kind of already had. And then you could go to a vote. And if people say no, then you're on record saying, I didn't like this and it's in the minutes and there you go.
And in all fairness-
You can still vote for the whole thing to go forward for review and then go to legislative.
I'd like to make a decision.
Well, and in all fairness, we're both there, all three of us are there. I mean, we can easily say this was one of the members, you know, concerned- Well, and in all fairness, we're, we're both there, all three of us are there, I mean, we can easily say this was one of the members', you know, concerns. Think about it, is it something that you're, because again, just because I think people should be able to do it, because I come from a construction family, um, I would never wanna pay somebody X amount of dollars to do it, cause I know it wouldn't cost me that, but I'm one person. Uh, but I could also say there's plenty of people that I probably wouldn't want to see them doing their own.
I, I have to say too, I, I completely get your point.
Yeah.
I, I could see both, I think the consistency is important to me, but I get that you, you don't want that long lingering bill for them, waiting for them to pay.
Here's what I'll say, one, one other item, one other item if I can jump in, so, I would say, this is your first, like many things, like many programs, it is difficult to anticipate, you can assume, you can hypothetically assume that A. And I can tell you that, hey, we've seen this in other municipalities, but until you go through your own program and see how it functions, you don't know yet, right?
It may need to be tweaked in a year.
Yeah, I agree with that completely, so it is, it's always something that you can bring it up to discussion and then you come back and say, hey, this sucks, look what these people are doing, we need to get rid of this X type of concrete, cause this is costing a major issue. Yeah, I know, I mean, just one of those things.
We end up with a bad contractor that we're responsible for and half of them break, we're the ones that's gonna have to deal with the phone calls and if they would've just done it on their own, the village wouldn't have had to deal with it.
We'll be going after that contractor.
We have, we have, but again, it's the headache of it, if you just say, look, put X, you know, cause trust me, in one aspect, I'm, I'm the total opposite, I'm, I'm the, village has nothing to do with it, you've got thirty days to fix it or else we're gonna send you a bill. You know, I don't, I, I just view it as, yeah, if they don't do a perfect job, then you're gonna hear about it too. So, there is no, there is no right answer, I mean, it's just like you said, you're gonna wait a year and see how it works and tweak it based on, I mean, we may completely change all the way in a year.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Alright.
So, who knows?
I'm gonna just say my discussion for council, but I, I just tell you.
I don't get to talk in there.
I'm, I'm not in favor of the program period, to be honest with you, so like, I think we should just tell people, hey, your sidewalk's messed up, you gotta fix it. And have, and have guidelines for what is accept, you know, what our standards are, and that's it.
So, like the last part of what I just said, it's one of those things, you don't want the village to be responsible at all?
It's other than, no, I don't wanna be responsible at all, because I'm less government, that's what I.
Other than telling it has to be done.
So, you'd have the program, but you'd have them fix it?
Yeah, it's that simple.
So, he's a toe washer.
Sidewalk's messed up, here's how you need to fix it.
And you got thirty days or whatever.
That's, yeah, and then we don't have all of this bureaucracy, is what I see in this program, I would say bureaucracy.
I guess I feel like it might be less bureaucracy if the village is just, if the village takes care of it, if it is taking care of it.
But it's.
It's done, you send them a bill, or however it works.
It requires us to love and respect and get the contractors in line, it's all of that stuff that we're gonna be responsible for.
I mean, honestly, my, my perspective is a little different in the sense of, as a property owner, if I don't have sidewalk currently, but if I had sidewalk in front of my property and the village suddenly comes to me and says, hey, you owe a thousand dollars and you have to basically figure everything out. It's not exactly making me feel very warm and fuzzy towards the village, I'll just put it that way, you know?
Right, and that's where Tiffany's.
It's bad enough that we as residents already have to pay for something that the public at large is using for the most part, you know, that's my opinion.
So, you'd like the village not to tell you it needs to be done, or you wanna be able to fix it yourself?
Right now, I think this is, uh, very, more than solid and I, I would like to see it move forward and, and move on to other things, is what I'd like to see.
I agree.
Yeah.
To, to move on, yeah.
Well, we've seen a motion to move that forward to council as a recommendation for planning zoning as it exists in front of you.
So, move.
Can I say what he said? Second.
Second, third, fourth.
All those in favor?
Sorry, I really didn't, I wanted that to be kind of a simple, I wasn't sure how to handle it, didn't mean.
Well, the discussion, in the discussions we have.
Discussion's good.
Yeah, well, I mean, honestly, I think council can figure it out, they, you know, that is, that's just the way I feel, I think it could work both ways, so, I, I don't know if you need to.
There's a motion, there's a second, there's a motion in a second.
So, all those in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Extentions?
Moving on.
Alright.
Very nice.
Alright, let's move on to the, it'll take plenty of minutes.
And, and I apologize, did we?
Did you want to talk about this, or?
Yes, that one, that's the next one in front of you, um, just to make sure, I thought I was hitting the last one, but maybe if my memory is fuzzy, so just to cover.
Yeah, we'll talk about that, sorry.
We, we discussed it, I don't know how far we got, but.
Okay, so.
I felt like we were all pretty good with it.
Yeah, that's why I thought.
As I recall.
That's why I thought we were forward, just to cover our bases, if everybody can just look over it again, I would like to, and again, I'll recheck to make sure it didn't already go forward, but. Just to cover our bases, everybody's good with what's in front of you, there's any discussion, let me know, I'd like to get that one moved up to legislative committee as well.
Moving on.
I just think it looks really sensible.
Just need a motion in a second, please.
So, move.
Move to propose.
I propose that we pass this off to council.
Very good.
And? I second the motion.
Very good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions?
Very good.
I know.
Very good, that was great from you guys, okay, uh, third item this evening is there are, as we've discussed, there are maps in front of you specifically to bring us back to the green space discussion. Um, I took, again, I took our edits from a few meetings ago that were on the main here and moved them to a more readable format. Obviously, there's a larger map to consider too, but since we are kind of focused in on both the lake as well as the areas that'll be conveyed to us. Those are again to start the discussion and anybody's welcome to jump in and say, hey.
Okay.
How do we wanna proceed forward in the discussion?
Yeah, and, and if folks don't mind, I'd like, I mean, roughly at most, maybe five minutes of floor time, just to talk through some stuff really quickly, this pertains to the apple orchard. And I'll, I'll just throw some stuff out there and we can have a conversation, unless, if folks feel strongly, they wanna talk about another component of the, uh, open space planning, um, let's do that, but.
Apple orchard, if you feel strongly.
Yeah, 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 so, I'll start it, I'll start here and that is, um, you want to get them in the ground, if we wanna do it this spring, you want to get them in the ground, ideally before bud break, so we're talking probably March, April. Um, the, the other thing, and I, you know, I advertise, advertise this by email, if the village is, is interested, uh, I would be plenty happy and my wife would be even more happier than I would. Be to donate several of the apple trees I currently have on my property, um.
If we dig them out?
I can dig, it's not that big, they're not, I mean, I planted these anywhere from last year to like three years ago.
Oh, okay.
So, it's actually, it's pretty, you know, it takes a while for a couple of years for them to come into production, so in, in that sense, it's a good deal, um, they're still movable, uh, but they're, they're mature enough, you wouldn't necessarily even be able to buy them in that state, but. So, that, I'm, I'm plenty willing, if, ideally for me, and you know, I defer to the village, but I would love to get them in the ground somewhere, you know, April, something like that. And that is, again, if, if the village would like that to happen, I know potentially maybe Hawthorne is an option. So, that, that's where I'm at, I've got several trees happy to donate, um.
What are your feelings on the, of the placement?
Yeah, that's, yeah, let's talk about that, so there are three, I think, three primary factors we have to take into consideration when you're talking an apple orchard, um, maybe four if you're talking the size, but I, I don't think we need to worry about that too much. So, the real, the three major factors are sunlight, it has to be in an area that's getting adequate sunlight, it can't be shaded out, ideally, it's positioned so you're getting great southeastern light. Uh, but that, that's overthinking it a little bit, uh, you just don't want it really shaded out. Uh, the other two factors, one would be drainage, you don't want it down, so where this apple orchard is currently situated, that's not a good spot, it's right down in, in the floodplain. Uh, ideally, uh, it's at a higher, you know, elevation, not, not directly in the floodplain. And then the third, uh, factor is contamination and that's, you know, that's just guesswork, honestly, but again, this apple orchard, it's immediately beside the old sewage treatment plant, it's probably the last place I'd wanna put it.
It's, the ground there is, they've determined it to be fine, so it's not the issue, so I think the more of the issue is the floodplain, I think that's, you know.
Yeah.
We, we talked initially because that's a flat area down there, I mean, everybody has seen it, I think, and, and walked it.
Okay.
Does it need to be flat?
No.
No, it just needs a good drainage for the discussion, so if you don't like it down there, then that's, that leads up for discussion, cause the, the topography in this doesn't have a topo on it, um, can it be put on more terrace, can it be put on the sides?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
An orchard on the side of the hill.
Near the amphitheater.
You can do that then.
Near the spillway.
Well, both of those, both of those areas that move up to the upper end lakes, uh, it, it's a terrace valley, so to speak, you know, when you look down there.
And sorry, where, where is this exactly?
Where, where you see that, both on either side of that apple orchard, so where you move upwards towards the lake on the east, there's also a lake unmarked to the west, so we're here.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
And there's, there's topo on either side of, you know, that moves upwards, you know, from elevation change standpoint, so you could move up, you could put them on the hillsides.
Okay. Yeah. Those, that could be a good location, yeah, the, the other place I was thinking of, and I've not had really benefit of, you know, walking through everything, but. One thing I do, um, in part just because I'm kind of over in that neck of the woods, is south of what's now the basketball court, there is some open land.
Yes.
Uh, and then, and then right adjacent to it, I, I presume that's, uh, village property, there's sort of a little nook right on the corner of Maplewood, that could be.
Yes, there's actually, on either side of that, so you can see on your maps, you can see the property line that goes, uh, if you start from where the sledding hill is marked, and there's a parcel line that goes between. Uh, kinda actually where it's really well marked out, they didn't continue the right of way, uh, for, uh, Alder Vista, that comes across there. That line transcend, transects that area and either side of that is village property.
Okay, yeah, just, just to the east, sort of northeast of that, that road, that would be road, yeah.
So, the, the north side is playground, the south side is more open for you, where the basketball court is not currently located.
Right, yeah, yeah, those could be ideal, the only concern potentially I would have is, uh, how much sunlight is coming in, that's something I could, you know, take a look at during various phases of the day, just to verify, but. That would be a great spot if, if that's what the village is interested in.
Okay.
And like you said, the other spot could have a lot of potential too, if you're up on the terrace.
Yeah, that's something to consider, I know that, that one, I don't, I would discuss with the terrace is simply that, I know we won't do any primary development there, right? So, we'd have to make sure we place it in a way that was out of any potential, which is why we're discussing it, any future development that could happen on flatter land that's near Alder Vista, Maplewood, you know, that area over here. You know, by, by the connector, because we already have a basketball court, there's been, of course, discussion, and I, I marked natural playground on the north side, so, I just don't wanna have, have to plant your trees in a couple of years down the road, somebody either rips them up or has to move them again, which is, you know, stressful to the, to the tree.
Gotcha. Yeah. Yeah, and, I mean, to, to that point, that little nook, I mean, I would be, I don't have any idea what the village could do other than plant something there, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, agreed.
Do you want this to be, do you want them to be, do you want people to go and take the apples and eat the apples, is it, is it meant to be someplace that's eaten for, what we get to?
Yeah, it's for, yeah, it's for, it's for everyone here, let's be honest, the deer are gonna get most of them.
Kids or? Right.
Until they get tall enough, um, yeah, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's for everyone and, and another, another thing for folks to consider, which is fine by me, but other folks might take issue. Like I said, I sent you that spreadsheet, I mean, at least half of the trees I'm talking, they're strictly for cider, you know, so, which, I mean.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that, that would have to be a question title, that would be, you know, managed or secured, you know, if we wanted to make sure the apples got to a certain stage of development, you may have to put some, depending where you place it, if you place it too close to where sidewalks are.
Yeah, you don't, you don't want it right by sidewalk, no.
Wanted away from, you know, where people can't easily go and get, so I would agree.
Yeah, no, the good thing, most of these are dwarfs, so they're not, they're not gonna be very obtrusive, um, I'll, I'll add, this is partly self-serving, but also in the interest of the village, I mean, it's. If it were in this little nook or something over there, that's pretty close to me and I'm plenty happy to maintain them, I don't have plans to leave, for whatever that's worth, I mean, that's not, you know.
Yeah, it's always good to have volunteers there to do it.
The other, yeah, the, the, yeah, I mean, the, the other thing too is, and I, I don't have benefit of looking at, um, the slope of the land, and this is partly a pet peeve, but I think it's, has universal implications. I don't, I'm not a huge fan of locating it down slope of several, you know, lawns, private lawns, because folks, many folks are spraying all kinds of chemicals in their lawns, I don't want that in my cider and my apples, you know?
Yes, yes. Yes. Absolutely.
Anyway, that, that's, I've said my piece.
So, I mean, what would be your first choice of those spots?
I mean, first choice would be more or less open and, and level, uh, we don't have a lot of that going on, so maybe Hawthorne, I don't know though. There are, I'm sure hangups there potentially, if the village does now. Village, yeah, I, I'll tell you, I've had my, I've had my eye for a couple of years on this little, if nothing else, you could plant a few trees, that'd be a great way to manage that little pocket there.
And it's back, it's like.
North of the sledding, sledding hill. What's that? Nothing's gonna, nothing's gonna.
You can't really do much else with that.
I've always wondered what the heck is going on there, yeah, yeah.
Is there a problem with, because I'd like to see some other, like berry, you know, but, I mean, is there a problem with having, yeah, apples and berries and proximity?
Mayonnaise?
No.
Pears and apples.
Bear, the, when you're talking trees, the only potential thing is you just don't want too much there, uh, but berries and like small like hazelnuts, you can put those anywhere.
Nice.
Those can go anywhere, I mean, yeah, there's, there's like virtually no limitation.
I guess what I'm getting at is if you're gonna have all the bird, you know, whatever, the animals being attracted, it oughta be in.
Put it in one spot or a couple of spots or something, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, instead of having, having it so there's, there are everywhere.
Well, we've already got my yard, so.
Well, not to.
Because that is, I won't say it down, some people may not like the, like with berries and all the, I know that I've had trees with berries and then a bird dropped, you know, it's a.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's where I was gonna go with that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I see that.
If you're talking berries in the village, unless you wanna, I don't think we wanna get into like all kinds of soil amendments, the, the berries that do really well here are blackberries and raspberries and you, I mean, they grow like weeds.
Right.
Yeah, um, and hazel seeds, oh yeah, you can put those anywhere, yeah.
I just have a momma that's going through.
Yeah, like you could even put, uh, nuts and berries right here.
Yeah.
You know, instead of the apple orchard, my, I guess over here, it's, it's gonna be far enough away from the playground that moms with little kids aren't gonna be worried about bees, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I mean, like looking at it now, it's kind of.
Yeah, now that, that's a valid cons- consideration too, as in like harvest season when you've got some, um, apples that are falling.
Yeah, the hornets primarily.
Yeah, that's, and that's, you know, I mean, I, I think probably this is one of the least used, if it's ever used spaces.
Agreed.
In a village, I've always coveted it forever, I'm not gonna lie.
Is this behind the, the corner of Maplewood, behind the garden that's there?
Yeah, there's a little garden on the frontage there, yeah.
So, is it, do you feel like it's sunny enough?
I think so, that, that's the main question to me, I think it is, but before we pulled the trigger, I think, you know, I would wanna just make sure.
It's pretty open to the south though.
Open to the south?
It's pretty open to the south area.
I feel like there are some trees, tall trees in there.
Yeah, that's what you want, yeah.
There are some trees, but they're going this way, they're going north, which is why between Alder Vista and here, there's a fair amount of trees, there's even a fair amount of trees over here. And I know residents on that end, cause I've lived there, um, are, were upset at how many of those got cut down, as many people were about this or that, so people would not be wanting to get rid of anything that's still here to put apple trees in, but here should work.
We're talking further here, okay.
Yeah, yeah, next to the little, yeah, the weird little triangle of land that has some nice grass and some hostas and some shrubs on it now.
I think it'd be kinda cool to do it for, like what you're saying, the berries.
Just there. For no other reason than it was land and people put things that wouldn't keep going.
So, when do we plant?
Um, I mean, technically, the ground's not frozen, we could do it tomorrow morning or.
Tomorrow.
Wait a minute, I think it's gonna be really cold. I think Monday's gonna be really cold.
How about Friday?
Uh, I, I can't, I might be available Sunday, but I think we probably need formal approval, perhaps, I have known some folks to guerrilla plant stuff, but probably shouldn't do that, uh.
No.
The days are behind me, yeah.
Do we have to get council, do they have to approve that?
Come on, let me approve something.
I, I think, I think for purposes of where there's no.
You want administrative approval.
Yeah, I, I think where there's an issue of, of, of no funding or formal program, it, it's one thing, council can accept kind of the plans, the plan can be accepted. And then the mayor administers the plan, and especially in this case where you have a active volunteer, uh, and already, he has stuff to put in the ground, you know? Then I think it's something that can get a pretty easy go-ahead, you know, but we're not to March yet, so we're getting there, a few weeks.
We're not to when?
March.
Yeah, I would say late March, sometime in April, maybe, yeah.
Do you have to do the readings and all that, or it's just, they can just say?
No, it's, it's, I, well, you actually could get a quick resolution, there would be a.
We would need one?
Well, that's something I need to ask, I don't, I don't think you necessarily need one, everybody, everyone can make a motion. There's a way to get it so that everybody's happy, right, so we can just do it without being too formal, right? It, it's a form of the plan that's being worked and that can be implemented for time frame purposes.
Well, I can just say, I can't imagine anyone on council opposing.
As long as you don't sic the fuzz on me, I think we're safe, but.
So, just take this something, we can do that, we have a meeting Monday, just to do like a quick. So, just take this something, we could do that, we have a meeting Monday, just to do like a quick.
Yeah, we can bring, we'll bring, we'll bring it up at our next meeting, or on Monday.
Yeah, it's Monday, that's what I'm saying, so then by the time weather, weather permitting, they would be able to do it whenever they want.
If the majority of council has a blessing, and that's really what you're looking for, and that's a simple motion, four members.
Let's, yeah, if, and it sounds like we will do, but when, when we do it, um, I'm happy to. You know, if we wanna make a thing of it and as an education tool and stuff and volunteer opportunity, you know.
We probably, from a plan standpoint, we'll just, we'll do something, you know, close enough from an auditor's print and then you can kind of draw.
Yeah.
Where you're gonna place them, things like that, then we can just have that on file, it's probably sufficient.
Yeah.
And there's your plan.
Well, I'd say too, if we wanted to do berries, that, the thing Donna sent out from, is it fishing?
Franklin County, yeah, they were having.
Yeah, they've got, five for thirty bucks, or, I mean.
Right on.
I'd say that's a pretty good price, so if we wanted to do that, we could.
And even something over, kind of, well, over by the pond where the apple orchard was initially. Like on the banks, you know, maybe having, having like the hazelnuts and blackberries over there. And then the apples over, over by the sledding hill, you know, that way we can.
Sounds like a small.
I know, I know some.
I know, right, it's gonna be great.
Well, and that's one of the things, I know, we know where the, we can get this out of the Marius Plant Fund, I know we can, know exactly where that comes out.
We do know where that's.
Yeah, okay.
That was one of the big things Donna was saying.
Guess about where that's coming from.
Can we, before my four years is done, can we make sure that that actually gets done?
I, you know, I, I don't, I wanna spend, I, I know this may not sound right, but I wanna spend Marius' money, we've only had it for twenty years.
Oh yeah, no kidding, how much money is that?
Well.
Right, twenty, or twenty.
Twenty, twenty-five, but there's, there are a lot of that, that triangle.
In nineteen ninety-nine, for a, with a five-year plan.
Wow.
To, they plant stuff, and I think it started off at twenty-five or twenty-eight or something like that.
I think it's about as much as what it started, that triangle where the, the cross from where the golf course was.
Oh yeah.
It's gonna need to be, there, I, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be redone, it could be completely taken down and done over, so. There are a lot of places we can spend.
We can spend the fun, the money.
Sorry, there's something I gotta share, and just bear with me here, um, so this could be a great hedge maze after a few years when it grows up, but we're. Talking hazelnuts, um, the commercial hazelnuts you get, Nutella and stuff, you've got the native hazelnuts, which are amazing, they've got beautiful fall colors. They're great for wildlife, the nuts are really tasty, but they're pretty small, the European hazelnuts are all the commercial cultivars, um. They're grown predominantly in Italy, Turkey, and actually out in Oregon, uh, they can't grow successfully in the east. We've never been able to have a commercial market in the eastern US because there are some fungal diseases that kill them. But just this year, Rutgers University capped off forty years of breeding research, and they're releasing to the public four new cultivars that are pure, you know. Totally resistant to the disease, you can get them fairly cheap, so anyway, the idea is if we did want to spend some money, um. That would be one hell of a way to honor Marius' wishes, maybe I'm over speaking, but it's an opportunity, you know, so.
It's cool.
Yeah, free village Nutella, yeah, but the squirrels will get every last nut, we need to hire someone, yeah.
How do they, how do they control the squirrels in the commercial, they just put big nets over the thing?
The best way to do it is to do it out, um, far enough away from the woodline.
Got it.
Uh, and then they're too scared of hawks and stuff, but, um, that's my sense, and I'll, I'm probably TMI, but I've got like thirty hazelnut bushes in my yard. The squirrels didn't know about them until like year, last year, year four or something, like I didn't get, I didn't get a single nut, you know, yeah, anyway. But hey, happy squirrels, it's better than nothing. Funny.
So, very good, um, alright, so it sounds like we've got a, a plan in motion for the apple orchard and any hazelnuts. Um, potentially, I'll, I'll gloss over a couple of these other items here, you guys can kind of jump in, um. Obviously, if there's a lake gazebo, uh, that may come with a whole great discussion as we report or any improvements, or even with this building, there may be, uh. As part of the construction, don't know yet, so I just, I put that on there because it was an idea that came out of his body, and so it's over as well. Um, the frisbee golf over where the school's gonna build is a serious discussion, they may put in several frisbee golf pieces over there.
The school, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
Let me ask, is that all, I mean, where do they, do you know where they plan to build the school on the sign?
Yes, it's, it's more towards the northeast section, uh, there'll, there'll be some green space, they're trying to keep it. It's an oddity because it's in the middle of a lot of residents, but they're trying to keep it more to the north and east, mostly because the access point. Primarily out of far view right there at Green Line is where their primary entrance are for the buses.
So, what is their plans for that other section, I mean, are they putting in?
No, there, there was supposed to be a green space, and they were thinking about maybe putting, they, part, part of the discussion was what can we put in there? You know, that people can use, obviously, during school hours, you're a little restricted, there are certain rules, they have their, it's their own grounds, they don't want people wandering. Playing golf or frisbee golf while the kids are at school, and so for security concern, but off hours, they have no issue with, and we, we talked about it. I said, well, we've talked about putting frisbee golf, and I said, well, we could put in a few holes, you know, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, so.
Look at that and say, it's kind of like off from everything else.
Well, the thing is, is that there's pathways and stuff, and you can, yeah, you can, you can work it out, and you can have, say, three holes, as an example, three or whatever holes fit. And then maybe you put in some more holes.
That's a pathway right there.
This is, no, this is actually gonna be the drive, correct?
There'll be a, there'll be a second, there'll be a second outlet right there, but there'll also be a pathway, right, they can put a pathway in there, so people can walk out.
So, they're gonna do like a one-way in, one-way out type thing, and it actually goes between those two people's houses.
Yeah, it's already there.
It's already there, well, sort of there, the hole's there.
The hole's there, um, so essentially, what'll, what'll happen is, yeah, you can put a few holes there, and so people have to walk a little bit maybe to get to, you know, use the sidewalks. And you can get to the other, perhaps by the upper lake, and then maybe you put in a few more holes as you walk down, people can have a long walk holes, right?
I'm just saying, you can drive over the houses, yeah.
There's, there's several different ways you can do it, but if there, you know, that was a suggestion, and they thought that was a great idea, and they may put that in, so. You'll see that when the plan comes before you, before this body, so eventually that'll make its way here next couple of months.
Well, I, you know, I've thought about the frisbee golf for a little while, and it's something that, at first I didn't think you'd have enough room, but the more I look at it. I think there is room, my concern is, you know, is having the golf course near the, or. Work, having playing near paths, you know, it's, you know, because you got frisbees flying and people trying to walk their dogs.
I don't disagree, yeah, there's ways to.
It's gonna be a challenge.
There's different ways to work it, we have room down there, but you know, if the apple orchard's not where the apple orchard is, you could have a couple holes down there, as an example. You know, there's just different ways to handle it.
There's just that, you know, Leeson, you've been through your more, way more lineup, like right below where it says bowl and skateboard.
Yeah.
You know, there's that, how is, how do you get back to that?
The tumpo is harsh back there, that's the problem back there, yeah, so it's, it, that one, I don't think you're gonna be able, without a lot of work developed. There's, there's cheaper ways.
That's like, to me, that, I'm just looking through it, there's, that's like a left to the wild area.
I, I don't, that's why nothing's on there, I don't want it reasonable without, you have to have spaces like that, and it's a good space for it, right?
Deer have to have someplace to sleep.
Lots of other things, yeah.
Very true.
I would, I'd like to see a corridor, if we could somehow incorporate that with whatever else we're doing, that they've got some. Land to sort of walk around and get places.
To, to get to that.
Yeah, well, I mean, they could, they could start over here, and if you look at it, they could just walk all through here and, and. Down over by where the apple orchard was and over here, and I don't know about, oh, you could come back here, because there's a path, kind of an opening behind these houses. So, it'd be nice for them.
Yeah, there, there's places to, to, to work it in, so, but, since I think you'll be getting a few with the plan for the school, it's just something to build on, in that part.
Yeah.
Um, and then it's not something, not necessarily something you couldn't do, you couldn't extend, in other parts of the village, have little. Uh, frisbee golf places to make people walk from village point to village point, because there are other.
I, I haven't seen it coming all the way up by here, you know, you're gonna leave the hole under.
Yeah, you've got some nice flat, you know, areas here which were platted, but not right away.
See that?
Not right away that was ever developed in the roadway, so you could put them in these areas, you've got some big areas in fact.
Where there were supposed to be roads, we could have frisbee golf.
You could, and there's plenty, I mean, it's sixty feet, seventy feet wide, there's more than enough room to put a couple of walkable courses, you know, in this area. And you would actually get yourself up to the lake, and you could do all kinds of nifty things.
It is a good point about the paths though, because I think there's a certain etiquette for them, and you want people to be able to walk and not have to.
Without having to go on a treadmill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Without a warning sign.
They did a really good job over Hoover.
It seems like dams, because there's one at Griggs Dam, there's one at Hoover, and they all, every dam's got a frisbee golf course around.
That opens space and they use it well.
That's why I think we got to, that and, and, and memory of the mineral park golf course.
Good point, it's one way to honor it.
You know, the, the sledding hill thing, the, the one that I, I feel strongly about, getting it somewhere, and I.
I think our kids would love that.
Yeah.
I'd love it, come on.
And I don't know, I, I don't think the place where that's at now, it's like.
Looks back, they can see it.
No, that was, I, I would agree with you, I think, I also think it's a little tight, you know, for a couple of reasons, I mean, if, if the orchards go back, and. We were talking about a couple of locations for the apple orchard, that's one part in the front, I don't necessarily think that's the best location either, but I think you have other. Options, I just need to be, we need to explore.
There was a spot that might be to sledding down, somewhere over around where the apple orchard, I think, is that.
Well, that's another, that's another possibility, the problem is down there, you, you have a creek at the end of it.
Well, I think he also lost coat there too.
The creek. That's the danger now, you don't wanna send people official Bill of Chill down into a creek.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's what I'm getting at, it seems like all of the places that are best for sledding have water hazards.
Have you been to Hoover, it's the same way, the best, the best hill, it says don't sled because there are big rocks, I mean, but it's like the perfect hill.
The other option, interestingly enough, and again, talking to the school, with its wide open space is, and they may not feel this way. But they could add a mound on that backside, you know, against those houses, and you sled toward, you have plenty of space before the buildings, so you, you have plenty of space to sled down. You know, on a gentle to mid-gentle slope, and you could go towards the, you know, towards the north. And, you know, so you want to be created in the process of the building, right, because they have the mound up props anyway, so it gives them some space. And then you have wider, you're trying to kind of create something that's a little tight in these other areas, right, I think you're, not always, you have a creek at the bottom. Or you've got trees, it's a danger where we send our children down into these areas, so. There's, there's other things to discuss, we can see how it goes, um, there are some benches out there now.
And I have two more at the garden, to go out, if we want them someplace.
It'll be helpful, I, since I don't have an act, I think they're down where, I've got benches, you've got a couple in that area now, right?
Yeah, um, okay, I have to think about it.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is the high, yeah, they're around the, the lake that's over here.
Yep.
Wait, am I right?
No, you're right, and that.
The tunnel is.
The tunnel's right where that pathway crosses underneath, by, by fit pathways.
The tunnel's here.
Yep, it goes underneath the road right there.
So, they must be like one here and one.
Yeah.
Where did you get benches?
Um, a resident.
We need some too. Right now, I'm in the process of trying to get some money allocated for picnic tables and benches, so.
Okay, I have to say, these benches are, you know, they were at a house, they're not like the benches that are out, they're not gonna be.
They're not heavy duties.
Yeah, that's true, but, um, we should, the MPCA should have information on where we got these. At least the paw bench, and probably the ones at the, the two benches at the corner of the lake. I think those were from the same company.
Okay, yeah, and the MPCA should have five hundred dollars, I think, from when we tore down the old. Playground, and we raised money for that, so that's in the MPCA's funds. That was intended to be used for the play space, either for benches, you know, whatever we wanted to do there. And it's just never been used, to my knowledge.
Okay, who would know about that, do you, generally, Danny?
Not.
Yeah, or, yeah, so, I mean, I.
Who wants to talk to Danny? I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
She, I think she's calm now, maybe, um, so, you'd like to know where they came from?
Yes, because before I just go start ordering something from somewhere.
Yeah.
Right now, I'm, 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 I've still gotta get my money, apparently I have no money to do anything with anything, so.
It's there, it's just figuring out.
It's there, it's just figured, yeah, so, no, I want some around the lake, I, I want a picnic table around the lake. Um, for residents to be able to use, and there's two bad benches that are out there.
Oh, over here, yeah, I agree.
Can we keep them someplace, we'll take this to the garden.
No, we can, absolutely, so, but I think the ones that are closest to the lake probably need to be a little more sturdy than those, but I think putting those somewhere else, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
No, I'm not getting rid of anything, we're sad, so, and then of course, trash cans is gonna be the other.
You will need trash cans.
Thing that we need along the path.
So, can we do trash slash recycle?
Yes, well, they're in the book, they're a little expensive, they're, no, let me rephrase that, they're a lot expensive.
They're hardy, so, rock floor type stuff, that's municipal grade.
So, it might be that we have one or two of those along somewhere, and then two or three other less expensive options along somewhere too. So, maybe we recycle one by the, by the park, maybe one up here, and then again, a couple along the way. For when people have dog bags that they wanna throw away, or just bottles of water, so. But yeah, they're, we were trying to find a way to build, um. The thing that's been around us, go buy a freaking twenty-dollar trash can, yeah, that's what it is.
Oh, you mean the holder itself.
Yeah, the holder itself is the problem.
They're, they're expensive and durable.
Like six hundred dollars expensive.
Really? This little wooden.
Yeah.
They're not wooden, they're all composite materials.
Some are metal, they, they have some that are wood, um, they last a really long time, but oh yeah, they're, they're a pretty penny, I mean, there's. But some of those ones that are recycled and this and that, those eleven hundred to fifteen hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, when you start saying that I need five, and then I need, you know, two park benches and two things, I'm like, ooh, that's ten grand.
Why don't you add them over a few years' time, and that's what they are.
Exactly, a couple here, a couple there.
So, if you do them like the ones, the wood ones that we have, is that not, do you not like that idea?
Oh no, I'm okay with anything.
So, that could be, I'm assuming that could be done by hand.
Yes.
If somebody knows what they're doing.
Well, and, you know, even some of the park benches, we had talked about, like, um, boy scouts and different things like that, they need to do some of them, so we've. We've even talked, the problem is, is we've talked about it, and then that's usually as far as it gets, so, but. We're, we're gonna work on it this year, because I need some park benches.
Yeah, we do.
So, I wonder, I just wonder if the association could, and, you know, they might not like that, but could, could they help with that, could somebody?
Could we team up with it, if nothing else?
Well, I don't know, but I've always, you know, the community association's got a lot of money, in my opinion, I mean, I wouldn't say a lot.
To, I, I don't know, last I heard, it sounded like it'd gone down a good bit.
Really?
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't know what's accurate.
Twenty thousand.
It's a lot, but they've got the shed.
That's actually what I heard, she's just shaking her head, and I'm like, I don't know, that's not a.
What, you're saying it's not twenty thousand?
Right.
It's lower.
Yeah, I don't know for sure, because I haven't done anything with money, so, doesn't, yeah, I, it just strikes me that. That any money over that, there are things that have already been budgeted for that haven't been done yet.
Like the shed, you know?
The shed is, the budget for that was seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Oh, I'm sure, that's a big chunk, I don't think it's gonna cost that much.
That's where, that's where it went.
Mm-hmm, yeah, well, I mean, everything's just so expensive, again, I, I never dreamt that I was gonna spend, you know, a thousand dollars on a picnic table either, so. I'm like, picnic table.
Can you just go to Home Depot and get a five hundred, or you want something nicer?
No, I'm gonna go look, because I about had a heart attack when I looked, so.
I'm of this cool thought, if you're gonna, if you got a really good one that costs eight hundred dollars, or you can get a decent one for a hundred, and just replace it.
Eight times. That's the way I do things, I go buy the cheap, cheap laptop, and I'm like, I'll just, they're only two with warranty, I'm like, nope, I'll just throw it away by anyone, because I got it for a high price.
There might be an insurance issue though, if you're not buying a municipal grade, because if somebody, you know, like breaks the bench or something, and. Sues the village.
It's one of the things, it's, again, this is a tried and true thing, the reason institutional buyers, whether it's a school or a city. Buy things of a certain grade is because there's a, um, cost benefit analysis when it comes to.
Replacing.
Replacement, manpower, time, year after year, imagine if you have, and eventually, and you're gonna get into it, you're maybe, you'll have ten out here, right? And so then someone's gotta keep track of that, someone's gotta watch, you know, what, what, what level of, you know, disrepair do they get into? Someone breaks it, someone gets hurt on it, because they jump on it, you shouldn't do that, right, but, you know, kids would do that, right? So, there's, there are reasons for it, and people have paved this way before, so yeah, does it suck to pony up a thousand dollars, sure it does, but. Fact is, does it last you for a decade or two decades maybe, yes, you know, it's just things to consider, especially with conferences, they last a lot longer. So, but I'm not buying benches, so, I'll let you guys determine with it.
I'm just speaking off the cuff here completely, but it seems like the sort of thing a major developer that's developing the village, maybe that's the sort of thing they'd wanna contribute to. Character of the, uh, development.
A major developer has contributed a few hundred thousand dollars beyond their requirements, so.
Well, they, we. See, they're in a generous mood, they're not, just, I'm speaking, I'm.
They have more than, they have, I would say that this developer has done its fair share, right? They have more than, they have, I would say that this developer has done its fair share, right? So, they've spent eighty grand on a, a nice fence in the back, they've spent ten thousand dollars on improving pathways, they had more money to put into stuff.
Basketball court.
Basketball court was another one they gave us, was a good eighty to a hundred grand, you know, when all said and done.
That's a whole nother conversation, they're still getting four million dollars tonight.
You're like, wait a minute, I don't know.
Inverted roadway and things like that.
I guess I'm sorry you brought it up.
Yeah, so, there are reasons for everything that has been improved and done.
But it will be brought up again when we start coming for that final approval.
So, alright, so.
Okay, what is this fit pathways?
Well, that was something that came up a few months back.
I think that's where you have those stations, that's where you can do chin ups or whatever.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
It's, uh, I checked into that and, I, the one I found was five, six thousand dollars, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous how much it is.
I don't think they, I've never seen too many people ever using them, they look great.
Well, I think it is kind of that, I, a lot of the stuff you could just do standing, you know, you could do squats or whatever, but I think it just probably looks good. I wonder if you couldn't just, I mean, you wanted to look professional, but couldn't you just do something yourself?
Do a chin up bar or something like that.
Can somebody do our trash cans and our benches and our, and our, uh, picnic tables and do the fit walkway?
I think that's a, a great point, because I, what I've seen of those things, they're not that much too, you know, rough cut timbers with a.
Well.
With a peg sticking out there.
Or they're ridiculously neon colored that probably you don't want.
Right.
I guess I looked at a couple, but.
They have a couple things like at the, um, Millstone Creek, have you guys been to that park, Millstone? Yeah, it's, it's one of the MI developments up in Westerville, by Westerville North, and they have like those little, it's, it's just, it's inside the park. They have like, as so, I'm assuming that's what we're talking about.
Yep.
The only thing that I have an issue with those, they seem to be broken quite a bit.
That's not ridiculous.
So, you know, I couldn't imagine spending, and again, you're gonna have kids playing on it because that's what kids do, they hang on them. So, you would have to be very cautious to the ones that you purchased.
Yes.
Because there, I mean, there are some really cool ones, they have like bike ones that you can sit on and it's just, it's, and I'm telling you, it was torn up like every other time I was there. So, yeah.
My kids were in the neighborhood, I guarantee they would be torn up.
Of course, it's Tony's kids, that's why we can't have nice things.
Things in mine.
So, that would be my only concern with those, I think it's a great idea to have ones that are easily maintainable and non-breakable.
The only piece of equipment I've seen that places the institutions buy that lasts a long time, is to be designed for, are actual high-end playground equipment. Those can take a beating, modern equipment, they're designed to, and they last, you pay a lot of money for them, but they will last you a long time with very little repair, right?
Well, then you've got the swings and stuff there too, and I think that's gonna be in the same boat, I think you, if you're gonna do it, you have to do it right, you can't do.
Agreed.
So, are we getting rid of those?
Well, I, what I'm doing is, I'm just kind of marking off fit pathways, swings can go with playground.
Well, I don't even know that we would mark it completely off, I think we would have to find a creative way to do some along the way that's not. Like she said, if we were able to find somebody that could, that wanted to invest in building some different things.
I could think of a few different things that we could do with that, I mean, there's always people that like projects.
Little like rock climbing walls for kids along the way, or again, something very basic, not.
Speaking of basic, um, one of the things that I was thinking about, um, with all of the sidewalks we have. Um, a way to encourage kids to get out and play without having any actual, needing any actual green space, is the sidewalks themselves, painting on them, little obstacle courses. You know, where it's hopscotch here and, you know, like, just little, you know, left foot here, right foot there, you know, just. They've got all kinds of ideas on, you know, on the internet, I think, probably, um, for each, each street, you know, and.
Maybe coming up with a little kid's playground, you know, that's more designed for, well, you know, little, smaller kids. You know, I think, you know, our play, the playground we have over here is, I wouldn't say bigger, but I'm talking about like real little. Little swings, little, that kind of stuff maybe, but I don't know about.
So, the nice thing is, on this side, on this, on, on the east side where the school's gonna go, there will be a playground, right? So, there'll be access, something accessible, you know, within walking distance of people in this surrounding area. So, really, I think you're going to be, with a professional built playground, you're gonna be well served by one in the school district zone.
Remind me, what, what grades going there?
That's a K to four.
K, okay.
K to four, when they're done, there's gonna be a transition here, but within five years, it'll be a K to four, because they have to read you Hawthorne, and I don't know how they're gonna do the other people at that point, but. What they said, the meeting was, that's gonna be a definitively K to four building, once the plant die out. So, you'll have a, you'll have a nice playground set here, which people, of course, will be able to use off school hours. And then, I think you're well served by the location of the other existing playground, and then improving upon that, you've got room to develop there, so then you've got two areas within some place in the middle. Exactly, so, that's something, I think, something that definitely people, I think, can focus on is. You obviously have an existing playground, perhaps you should improve upon it, buy new equipment, cause that's an investment, as we talked about, it's expensive. And then there was an idea for a natural playground or something in that north, that, that area right there, north of Alder Vista, within that green square as well too, so. You know, that's, that's something I think, I think the village probably is behind.
I think the only thing, my vision for the natural playground area is, that is our one area that we could do. National night outs or, um. Block parties and different things like that, so, putting too many playground equipment type things in that area at this point, I think the basketball's great to go with national night out and, you know. Um, the block parties and all of that, the only thing that I really think that is missing in that area is, I'm gonna go back to my picnic tables again. Um, but, you know, some sort of shelter, and I don't mean like break a hundred thousand dollar building, I mean, I'm even thinking more of just.
Only on the.
And I don't wanna say a tent either, something in between the two. So, something that you could potentially cook out under or cook out near or cook out next to it, you know, you have it, of course, outside the thing, and then, of course, you can eat under the tent. If it starts raining.
Are you talking temporary?
No, I'm talking a permanent structure, and I don't, again, I don't know how, I would, cause it's huge.
Right, you can see them up at Hoover, they've got those open air roofs, you've got growing areas underneath them.
Yeah, just a basic structure that people can use, and again, I, yeah, no, we're not gonna have, more than likely not gonna have bathrooms and all that kind of stuff, just because. It, it puts a huge total onto it, but I would like to see the natural playground not get anything else.
Yes.
Like large equipment or anything like that, because I think having the space to be able to have people.
Mm-hmm.
A large group of people is what's missing everywhere else, I don't think there's a lot of places, and the only thing that I, that comes to mind are the two events that we did last year. Where would we have those? Okay, we could have it at Hawthorne again, but wouldn't it be nice to have it in the village? Um, to where they could actually close off the road, they could do different things in this area, but I feel like the one thing missing is some sort of rain shelter. And, and again, I don't mean it by shelter, just some sort of, yeah, something.
So, I agree, um, I've actually looked at that area for something like that, thinking, should it be, could it be next to the basketball court?
And I don't know.
I don't know if that makes sense, or could it be, I think, in the area you're talking about? The one thing I wonder is if, cause you've got the basketball court, you've got maybe cars coming to that, is it gonna be?
Too much.
Yeah, more people, but maybe they'll park on the, whatever that street is, in the new development side.
You've got a lot of space there from a parking standpoint, especially on the, um, I know of this, was it Maplewood along there?
Well, yeah, but I'm thinking for the people who are on, who, who are on Maplewood, who were feeling like there were gonna be a lot of cars in the basketball court, to put something else in there. That there might be a lot of cars.
So, you have a lot of space, for better for worse, that's developable.
Right there.
Right there, and you do, and so, you're, you, you know, if you don't want the natural playground, right, whereas that obviously, it can be moved. Your playground can be expanded where it currently exists.
Can, yeah, can.
You sample Alder Vista.
Can we just switch that to a natural playground?
Yeah, you can do it.
When we do it, we could just do that there.
You can do it, if you're like, south of Alder Vista and Maplewood right there, you've got a very large green space in between Maplewood and then where the basketball court is located. It's just flat, it's easy, it's easily accessible, and it's easily developable.
That's, that's a great space and it's so underutilized, you know?
It is.
Yeah.
You're talking about where the trees are, where your apple.
No, it's, uh, just, just north, just north of that, yeah.
You've got, that's space there from the new side, quite frankly.
But in the new side, on the new side.
You can do it either way.
I don't think it should be on the old side.
Understood, and that's, again, it is a function of what you have from an asset standpoint, you have land there.
You have a lot there.
Public, that is up to the village as a whole.
What do you mean by a natural playground? That's what I'm, what do you?
I'm gonna get you pictures.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm waiting for, there's a great one up at, um, in Worcester.
Yes.
In Worcester.
Yeah, uh, I, I don't know if I have pictures at home, but when I get out there, I'm gonna get you pictures.
It's more like, things like big, think of a big stump, right?
Pounds of dirt.
Yeah, things that are part of the natural environment.
That's what I, like, as a kid, that's all.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I was like, what are these kids back reality?
It's not a tiny, tiny piece of equipment that they put into the ground and pump it in and stuff with, with the rubber marge, right? It's, it is actually part of the natural, feels like a natural environment, you know, the natural parks have some of them sprinkled in different places now too.
Yeah, it's like a downed tree, and then, you know, they've got a ladder, so they can climb right over the downed tree.
Yep, that's pretty cool, so, but you, but, but for better for worse, this area here has a, thanks to the donation and the already existing public ground there. Has a wide berth of land that can be utilized, you know, and so, it is what it is, it's also an easy. It's an easy middle space between the two, you know, between, on this side of.
Yeah.
The lake.
Central.
Between the newer development and the, and, you know, the older section there, so.
So, how would the shelter house be next to the basketball court? Could that not make sense?
It could, it could be on the north side, I think, right, is what we're talking about on this.
Well, I honestly, I.
It could be, it could be there too, I think it could be the north.
I'm talking south of.
You have to avoid the big culvert of the ground, but.
In that, in that space next to.
Yeah, there's space, there's space around where, there's a drainage culvert under the ground there, okay? The basketball court avoids it, um, it's to the south, and it goes at an angle, because then it dumps into the, it dumps on the other side, it goes under the street. And dumps into that area right there, where the water continues on to the east, okay? Um, you can go over there and see where it kind of works its way in and goes, disappears to go under the, the road, so there's space to work with on either side.
Yeah, I don't think we would do anything huge, I mean, again, I think it would just be nice for a small birthday party to be able, if it started raining, they could, and I'm not, again, I'm not talking fifty people, I'm just talking. Basic little function that people could go over there, or just the simple fact that it's, I mean, I know that there's trees there, but. Super hot one day and they want to sit in the shade while their kid is playing basketball, so, and they wanna watch them.
Yeah, well, you have room, and this is what's interesting, obviously, when we have them do the concrete for the basketball court, there's, it was intended that there's twenty feet-ish. On the side closer to the road, that you can eventually put up some type of covering shelter, and there's ways to do it, both soft coverings as well as hard covers, you can choose, you can put a.
I don't think about that.
Yeah, they have those nice soft covers, you've seen on playgrounds where they can just keep the sun off certain areas.
Is it too close to the basketball? If you've got people that are meeting, cooking, eating, is that too close to the basketball court?
It all depends on how it's laid out.
Okay.
Well, there's trees there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple trees, yeah.
Yeah.
But if you, if you go to other places, I know, I know Bexley's a good example, um, you know, the areas between Bexley and Columbus, they've got, I don't think it's Columbus Park line, but they've got shelters. Built into the low area there where they've, where they've got near Cassidy, where they've got the shelters, you know, and they've got basketball courts right nearby. People go back and forth between those, where they watch the games, people look out, you can do it, I mean, it just all depends on how you wanna make a fun. So.
I think the next meeting needs to be out there.
It could be, I mean, it's like this light, it's gonna get easier, obviously, right now it's a little dark, right, as our time.
It's so much easier to go, wait, that needs to go there, that needs to go there.
I don't know, we have some timber and lights there, now that all, most of the houses are in, and now it can kind of give the.
You can.
Full effect of what we got to deal with.
Absolutely.
Right, cause you can see whose backyard space is this, is this a bad idea to put this in there?
That's what I'm thinking about, the amphitheater, and I'm already, you know, I've been looking at projectors already, you know, because it's. To me, the amphitheater that's there is, it doesn't need any work at all to be able to show movies there this summer. Except for getting electric there, I mean.
I'm gonna get you an extension cord.
If you look, I mean, the projectors nowadays are.
LEDs and low voltage, you can bring a battery with them and get them going to be quick, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and, and my thing is, is to start the process of how good of a unit we need. And start off with something cheap and say, this is, put up a bed, I don't wanna say a bed sheet, but.
You'd have to get something up there, yeah.
Yeah, and you can hang it right across from the pillars that are there right now, I mean, there's.
You could.
Yeah, and, and the seating, I mean, it's got the, you know.
Sit on the back of the dam, right?
Well, here's a great, here's a great way to do this, you know, and this is just seeing how well. People take it.
Well, yeah.
Is it something that people are gonna utilize? I mean, I understand it's a starting step, but.
Yeah.
Is it something that people are excited about, once it's actually, you know, if you were able to implement something small right now and say, look, this is what we're planning on doing, dah 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 dah.
Who's choosing the movies, right, that's what.
What's happening?
Depends on what movies you should, you choose to play, I'm just being, yeah.
You know, maybe we do a late night.
Maybe we should do a six PM and a ten PM.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's have some adult movies too.
Yeah.
I mean.
We'll move it with, yeah, I know.
Mature movies, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
We'll, we'll add it to wine and cheese at the same time, the ten PM wine and cheese and six PM, see your kids home at eight.
We'll do that, so, that's a, and that's more of a functional one, you perhaps could, you know, sooner we'd have to look at the amphitheater, I don't disagree, you'd wanna see how it's laid out, how it's designed, but, yeah, you could add a couple things and.
And, you know, the proximity to the people's houses too is, you know, it's pretty close and, but there are trees in between.
There are, and, and you're also, houses are up at a higher elevation.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Versus where you would necessarily shine, and you wouldn't keep it, I mean, obviously, the village, we wouldn't keep it up late, they're not going to.
Oh, come on.
It's up to you there.
Well, I mean, if you're starting at dark, do you, yeah, you'd wanna start at dark, so it might be till.
It needs to be dark to be able to.
It's gonna be darker in the.
Nine to eleven?
Remember, it's gonna be darker, it's gonna be darker in the dip, so, as I wanna put it there, you're gonna be down in, in a valley. And you've got trees around you, and you'll be surprised how darker it gets there versus an open field, right, where you're up at a higher elevation, so.
But I'm sure, I just think it's a great idea to get a tryout going, just the simple fact is everybody around there complaining, is everybody, you know, I mean, it, it would be a good.
You'd have to see if, if, for people who maybe can't make it down the hill, that they need to stay up here, can they see.
Right.
What's being shown, is it, are they too high up, or is it, I, I don't, I don't know if it.
I think it's a great thing to do is a try run.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Well, I'm getting, I'd like to know if we can turn that light off.
The cobra?
The, well, the big orange on the pole.
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a big cobra, I believe you can, we'll just have to coordinate that, that's right, that's a good point.
Like, turn it off and turn it on, you mean control turn it off and on?
Yeah, we'd have to coordinate that and see what.
Then we can get the plug from that pole, get some electricity.
Yeah, yeah, good, that's, and you can do that, so, you can get a meter, we can get a meter put into any location we want, we assign it an address, an AP will drop a meter for us, right? There's a small fee with that, it's not a big deal, but, yeah, we could, we can get electric down there, that's not a challenge.
That's really part of another conversation, cause I have, I've had a lot of people, you know, get on me about, MI's in here redoing the, the, the damn area. And let those gaudy lights up, you know, and.
The light, you mean the streetlights?
Not the street, just that orange light that's on a pole right there on the path.
Yeah, we'll have to just, and that was, it's probably, I mean, it's just a leftover.
Well, I, I think it's been there, it was, well, it was there, I don't think it's anything they put in, it's been there.
No, no, they didn't put it in, I agree with you, it, nobody addressed at the time of development.
Right, that's what I'm getting at, I'm, they didn't put that up, but I think that's part of a.
Okay.
Overall green space planning.
Agreed.
Is coming up with something that and getting rid of those darn yellow, whatever that block, the thing blocking the stuff and going down the dam.
I'll let you guys deal with that with the ladies.
That's a great discussion.
I can handle the light.
I, somebody we talked to, was it the OD and our guy, said they come in different colors, you don't have to have yellow.
I would ima, I mean, I could imagine in a, in a lake with boating, you know, we, we want something yellow, you know, but we don't, the only thing we need to stop with the ducks.
That's true.
I'm gonna go green or brown.
So.
Yeah, not true.[1709.05]
But that's part, I'm just agreeing that up because it's something I'd like to start talking about with, with part of the amph, I don't, you know.
Okay.
I don't think we need to do much more with the amphitheater other than fixing up what we have.
Okay.
But, but then that's something.
I think it's been, I think it's been a very good discussion, because two things that are action items that we can move rather quickly on, it sounds like, whether it's the um.
Apple.
Apple orchard, and then obviously, we could, we can start the process now of looking into the amphitheater, I mean, if we can.
And my structure, I'm gonna go figure out my structure.
And your structure, that one's a little more, it's still gonna cost some money, you'll have to get some, some apples.
That's what I'm, I'm driving around, I'm always looking at pension funds.
But, you know, and benches, by the way, benches are other things, you just.
Ennisland, do you go to Ennisland?
Mm-hmm.
They've got a nice little shelter there.
Yeah.
And actually, did I send that to you, I sent that to you, I sent that to somebody that, it looks like they, I don't know if they're bathrooms, I mean, you said no bathrooms, but.
I don't have it. Well, I'm, I'm just thinking.
It looks like they have doors for bathrooms, or potentially could be in the back of that.
Yeah.
We have, we have pipes over there, so especially, if we, if you're gonna do a lot at this, which, I think you're gonna move towards that direction here.
You wanna be as close to utilities as.
You, 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 yeah, you, you've got the room to do something.
And if we have the room and the money, I, I, you know, and, and here's the next, here's the next thing, we start out small, we do a basic structure, do people use it?
Yeah. Yeah.
And if nobody's using it, then we don't go.
You put it up on a body, you can see what people use, I guarantee, I, I, I'm telling you, they'll use it out there, when you allow people, people will use it.
That's all. You can build it, they will come.
Yes, anyway.
I, I wonder about, Donna had, you had turned the, something about the amphitheater into.
Yes.
Somebody.
Yes.
Oh, we, we, we have not heard back from that yet.
Isn't it like twenty twenty one, before we were.
Capital budget, who knows, you might get a million bucks, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we were, we were asking for two hundred and fifty thousand, um, for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And they went through like the first round where they meet with all of the Franklin County people and decide whether or not they think it's fitting, and they said, yes, this would be a great project for, you have our approval. We're gonna put it into the budget, now whether or not it actually gets approved is another thing, so they're still kind of in that process.
Yeah.
But the last time I talked with representative light body, she also said that she was going to be meeting with um, Dr. Kellaw. And, um, because I wanted to know if, you know, western schools, they're gonna, I mean, they could certainly use that as an outdoor education facility. And if, if they are a stakeholder in this, would they be willing, um, you know, to put forth any, any money for that since, you know, they could, they could get a lot of use out of it? And, um, she said she would put a bug in his ear and, you know, see what he thought about that as well, so it's, I mean.
Is she still coming here tomorrow?
As of now, yes, I haven't heard any different. So, I don't know, I, I hadn't heard anything back about that, but, um, it wouldn't be for a while that the, the money was approved anyway. And I was kind of figuring that, you know, with the space, with amphitheater itself, nothing other than cutting down those trees unless it's already been done. Um, not a whole lot needs to be done, but you could do things in a staged approach so that it always looks like it's complete. Um, and then you can just kind of build on it if, if it's something that people are using and you wanna make things fancy or whatever, or if you did get the money, you know. You can find a way to do things, so, but otherwise, it's, you know, the way it is, it's good, I think.
I don't have anything else, I want someone to hear something additional.
I do, I'll know when you're done.
Well, go ahead. I, uh, I guess would like to find out what the appetite is from planning and zoning, to start talking about. What we need to have permits for in the village, if you guys even wanna get involved.
I think that's kind of where I was going, Pam, I talked to Pam today, and she, so she does the greeting, and she was, I think the last meeting, we talked about. The pages that.
Correct, are missing.
Scott did, and she, so she's.
She's still waiting.
She's one, yeah, she's wondering if, if we've done anything, are we going to do, and I think that's kind of what you're talking about, right?
Yes, and because here, you know.
So.
The conversation, uh, you know, we can argue about what our code book says till the cows come home. The real conversation needs to start to be, what do we want to require the residents to do? And that, I think, is what this group is really supposed to be doing, you know, is making recommendations to council for the permitting process. This, this is all the ordinances, you know, when it comes to the driveway shed, I mean, that, I've looked at just recently at this accessory structures code. That is, and it was just recently passed, and I think that was seventeen, it's the most vague thing I've ever seen on my life. You know, when to, about what is an, it doesn't even describe what an accessory structure is, other than it's, you know, incidental to the primary use of the property. And we've got people, you know, being told they need to get a permit for an accessory structure for, what? And then, let's just say for a shed, an example, is that we may be, if you wanna put up a shed, you gotta get a permit, but we don't have any discuss, there's no description of what's an acceptable shed. You know, I, I wanna ask, what is a code enforcement officer going out and look at, when someone asks to, you know, get a permit for a shed? It's like, oh, yeah, that's good, you know, there's no, there's no description of what kinds of sheds are acceptable or not.
Some point we were doing that, we had materials that, that they were in size that they were supposed to be, at some point.
Where's.
So, so what happened was is, um.
Didn't make it into the code.
Two things, part of that was Scott Dolinger thing that was in process prior to my arrival, so, they were working on that with the P S at the time in twenty seventeen, if I remember, cuz there was discussion. The members who were present at that moment, um, we, I'll have to go back and double check this, I know that when we were making some changes to the development text in the new development. I think it was four, that sheds had come up in that discussion, I gotta double check that, because I believe, this is what Michael Brown was on, in this commission as a liaison, one of the leading reasons is they, they. Put language for sheds to be, um, complimentary to the houses, right, materials, so, you know, that way you wouldn't just have some crazy shed of class.
But that was in the new development.
I believe that's correct, I, I, I know the intent, the intent, being back to your point, was to eventually get it to the rest of the village on several items, that being.
I feel like it was the rest of the village, too.
Yeah, I have to.
I could be wrong.
I have to double check, I don't recall off the top of my head, so.
That was during Karen Cogle, if that helps.
I may have come after Karen, I don't know, so.
Maybe.
I did, I think that was.
Was she on the plane who gone, Chris?
Yeah, she was prior to my arrival, so.
Yeah.
She was, I think she was.
Cause I came in, in sixteen, and she wasn't there when I started coming to the P S at the east.
Never even heard of her.
So.
She's moved.
She's on the list.
Yeah, she was on the far view form.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's why, so, yeah, she, she, I was slightly after her, I was, so, so my memory goes back to the, the sheds were a discussion, and when we talk about. Accessory structures, it is vague for the very reason that there are many accessory structures that are vague, right? I could put a gazebo to my backyard, this is an accessory structure, it is a structure by, by definition, right? And we do have a definition for structure, so it is in there, and once we, 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 we require permits, as we're talking about this topic, for accessory structures. Regardless of how you define a structure, because what happens, well, I can tell you what happens, if you do not require a permit and verify what they're doing in the backyard. They will end up either within a setback, which you, you wanna prevent, because they're a structure, they'll end up on, on public property, which we have plenty of examples of sheds appearing on the public property, and people decide it's theirs and stick the shed on it. Um, they exist today, so there, and we can get into this whole discussion, but there are many reasons of why you require a permit, so that the body can easily debate that, and I can give you all the reasons and.
I've heard the reasons why, and I'm kind of the same mind as with, with sidewalks, where if someone put, builds a fence.
That would be, right.
Yeah, the, the. Body can make a prediction.
I mean, the permitting process doesn't eliminate, doesn't take away the possibility for someone to put it in the wrong spot, and the code enforcement officer goes, oh, in the wrong spot.
Correct. Yeah.
I mean, so.
But you have to know what they're doing, so if we, if we, we can do it, there's Wild West, right, which most of these.
See, I hate that description.
But that's what happens, so either, either people can do it, hold on, people can either do it, you can say, hey, you know what? Do whatever you want in the residential district, and maybe if we catch it, that's fine, so, and we'll leave it to civil stuff, so that, that's one way to go, right? Most places have decided, including this place, this village has decided that, hey, some things need to be regulated, for better or worse.
Everything in it.
Yeah, not everything, but some things need to be regulated, right? Because we found that there's a lot of hardship upon both the neighbors, you know, if we do not require permits for certain things as well as us, right, as the body. Going out and getting them after the fact creates a lot more headaches than if we simply were able to review it in the first place to prevent it from being stuck in the ground, right? Say, hey, don't do this because you're doing a setback, right? It's a simple thing, that's why we asked for a review, so there's any reasons as to why municipalities require permits, and we can gladly go through all of this.
No, we will.
Definitely, and if mine is, well, can recommend it, totally made the upset, right, and you all vote five zero and say, hey, do it everything, right?
And, and there's some. And there's.
I'm not seeing that, but you can see.
I'm teasing, 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 or we can, you know, or we a three two vote on certain things, two twos, one, who knows, right?
I understand that, I'm, you know, there are some people that oppose my ideas, and I, and that's, I don't.
Oh, good. It's for healthy debate.
But it is, the, the direction that this village has gone in the last sixteen years is to go from, we didn't need a permit for anything. Till you gotta have a permit for so many different things.
So a lot of your things have been on the books for a long time, it depends on, it comes back to the enforcement standpoint, many things have been on the books since eighty nine, quite frankly, okay? And so, I think it's, it doesn't do it justice in the last sixteen years, I think people, I think certain administrations enforced it more stringently than others, I think it's a fair assessment, right? And it's on the books, it's a requirement, if you don't like it on the books, you, you get rid of it, that's a requirement, and that's where the, that's where the discussion and the recommendation comes from.
And that's where I think this group, we need to start to talk about that very topic, about patios, sheds, driveways.
Yep.
You know, sidewalks is gonna be the one that.
Yeah. If the commission wants to get into a, a, a multi-meeting discussion.
And how to make you pay, that's it, whatever.
No, don't start with that today.
We can all, we can have a discussion about that, obviously, there's a long, maybe.
Oh, no, I told him, hey, Eric, I won.
I just wanna bring it up, and that, we, we were talking about it, and whatever, it fell off the agenda, so.
Just in case.
It, it is, it, it depends on when the commission wants to make, you know, you made your mission progress, quite frankly, on the green space, I think it was a great discussion.
It was, yeah.
And so, you know.
We got sidewalks and we got the.
Yeah.
The commission, you know, came forward, but there's, those things have been nagging at me, you know, forever.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand, and people can have a, we can have a valid, uh, discussion on, and people can vote it up or down on several different things, if something's important, they make a recommendation, they can leave things as is, we can make changes, wholesale changes. And again, it comes back to council, and then the debate can be in front of council as to the recommendations that have come forth, so.
The only thing that I, and I brought it up earlier, and I know everybody wants to go home, so, first off, I think that everybody will be able to discuss these, because I, I, I feel like this was actually really productive. Going back to Pam wanting that sheet, it is difficult when somebody walks in the door to say, do I need a permit for this, and, and sometimes I just kinda look around going, I have no idea. So, to follow up with what Tony's saying, there's certain things that, I mean, I don't have a sheet that just says you need a permit, it's kinda like, do, do we, do we not?
So, what about Scott's sheet, is that not part of it still?
Scott's got, they all, he said dirt, Scott's sheet got, Scott's sheet got altered and made a little more readable, cuz it was, it was, it was a, it was a good step, right? So, so somebody actually took the time to put it into writing to say, hey, you do need things for, for, you know, from a building department standpoint, or from a zoning, or for both, right?
He did.
And so it was a good, it was a good run through, and you should have done that, and then it got, got adjusted again, and then, you know, obviously, there's gonna be a discussion, it can be.
So does that not help at this point?
It's gone.
Now, wait, would, to say that that was a good start is giving Scott a lot of credit.
Of, altered means gone? Okay.
Well, someone took the time to do this.
But wait a minute, wait a minute. So the reason Pam doesn't have, the reason Pam doesn't have that is because a lot of that information wasn't fast.
It's not accurate.
It wasn't accurate, so that's why we pulled it, um, we pulled it so we could make sure that it was actually accurate.
Okay.
And it was the same, I mean, and would you agree with that, there was, there were things on there that just weren't accurate.
I think, I, I think the, the issue with it, from my standpoint, is that I understand it because I do this on a daily basis, right? But I think the problem is, it was not clear, it, I think it's the biggest problem, it's not, there were non-clear issues.
No, the problem was. It's pretty clear, I thought that was a great, I, it was a great piece of paper that you could look at and say, I've got a fence, I wanna build a fence, who do I go to, what do I have to do?
It was.
The problem, and this is where Eric and I would disagree, is that the things that he had on that list, you need a permit for, you don't need a permit for, you are.
So, of course, I would disagree with that, because everything on there, you did need a permit for, but that's for a discussion.
Have you gotten anywhere closer to coming up with, you know, two weeks ago, you said, I'll have a report for the mayor.
Yes, I did say that to the mayor, and the mayor's kept me active on a number of things, so, so.
Well. I, well, my point is that I.
When we get to a discussion here.
Everybody would say that right now, doesn't it?
Is that, you're so sure that the, about your, your, so why's it gonna take you two weeks to, to point out the cards in the code, to point these things out if you already know what you're later?
Again, what, what, perhaps what you have forgotten is that I'm not a forty hour week employee, I'm a fifteen hour week employee at this point, and the mayor has kept me active on a few things, and we, we have things on priorities, and eventually.
I understand.
We get to those, and they take hours to do some work, that's why.
Well, but my point, I'm gonna say again, is that if you're sure that they're in the code, what's gonna take so long for you to just say, this is the code?
Because Tony, as, as a professional in this business, someone who takes pride in the work, I'm not gonna put something half-assed in front of you, quite frankly, I'm gonna go through, thoroughly review everything. So that I can clearly and confidently say to you, hey, this is backed by this particular subsection of the code, and here it is in writing, black and white, and here's what you need to do. And oh, yes, our assumption here was incorrect, this is the correct way to do it, right, cuz where corrections are made, I will be the first to admit where.
And I will, and that is exactly what I wanna hear, I don't wanna hear, this is what I think, I want it backed up.
Is that something that we can do, we can each take a subject and research it?
You all would like to read on.
Something the village attorney could do as well, I don't know.
So, so the village attorney, so, okay, so do you, 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 the answer is yes and no, and again, if you wanna dedicate money, yeah, that's not really.
Their costs involved, I don't know.
Two hundred fifty dollars per hour.
We're gonna, yeah, yeah.
The, the attorney's there, the attorney's there to clar, so, the attorney's more there to clarify, like, there was a good question the mayor and I were discussing today as an example, right? On some definitional items, and where they're gray is where we get into attorney questions because of.
That's fine, yeah, I have no idea, yeah, I mean, if the guy is on straight salary and, but that's, yeah.
Right.
There's some things that are not clear because of the way our code is written, right, and so we have to go to interpretation, and then what does, what do the court cases say, and what direction should we go from interpretation standpoint? What's the safe way to help based on what our code says, that's a whole different discussion, that's what the attorney's for, right?
Okay.
To give us legal opinion on certain areas.
Underst, understood.
And I think there's always gonna be gray areas, but I feel like I've heard the word gray area a couple times this week, that refer to codes and different things like that, and that's kind of why I'm excited about the sidewalk thing, is I don't want gray areas, I think it means.
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah, it's not helpful, gray areas are helpful.
No, it's not helpful because it makes us all look bad, so it makes, it makes for a, you know, it makes for Becky to have a rough day.
But, but is it possible, I mean, sometimes maybe you're, you have to have a gray area.
You're gonna always have a gray area, there's always gonna be a gray area, but I feel like so far this week, it's just been up more than everything, and then I, it.
Oh, I just wanted to tell Tony, I have the whole code printed out.
I do too.
Okay.
That's why I'm so certain, that's why I'm so certain that the things that Scott Dolinger put in the book on this list.
Okay, okay, you and I can talk about it.
And, you know, Eric, I would just say, you're, the reason that I have this angst, angst towards you about your interpretation of the code, is your, your interpretation of the driveway's permit. I'm, and, you know, citing a code that says use of right of way.
Yeah, so again.
That, that is being, in your estimation, that means people need to get a driveway permit.
It is well-established law, well-established law, that if we, we can regulate our right of way, whether you think we can, I have a legal opinion says we can do that.
If you're gonna tear an apron.
I'm not saying that we can't, this is where you're missing, this is where you're missing. I'm not saying that we can't, Eric, this is where you're missing.
I don't wanna argue this, I have a law, legal opinion backing for the law director, I know better, I know more about these styles, you can regulate people's access to our property.
I understand that it can be done, you can't take our code and use that, use a right of way.
Certainly can't.